All right, we are on at 7:30. This is the City of Brainerd City Council meeting. It's Tuesday, September 6th. It's 7:30, and I call the meeting to order. Administrator Bergman, please call the roll.
Stunich.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Beazer.
Here.
Stingline.
Here.
Erickson.
Here.
O'Day.
Here.
Bevins.
Here.
And Bedeau.
Prepped and ready.
Please.
Please.
All right, there's items one, two, and three. Should we keep going?
Yep.
All right.
Cut through.
Item four, approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
So move Johnson.
Second.
Motion by Johnson, second by Stunich. Any discussion, hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign that motion carries. Item five is the consent calendar. Notice to the public that all matters listed are considered routine by the council will be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless good cause is shown prior to the time the council votes and the motion to be adopted by roll call. Is there a move to adopt the consent calendar?
Move to approve, Erickson.
Motion by Erickson, second by O'Day. Any discussion? Hearing none. Administrator Bergman, please call the roll.
Stunich.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Beazer.
Yes.
Stingline.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
O'Day.
Yes.
And Bevins.
Yes, we're underway. Item six is council committee report, 6A. Personal and Finance Committee Chairman, Gabe Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have a total of nine quick items on the agenda tonight, the first of which is approval of memorandum of agreement with the IBEW Admin Support Union for Acting Transit Coordinator Position. And the motion is to approve the MOA between the City of Brainerd, IBEW, and Crystal Gothier for Gothier to be appointed as our Acting Transit Coordinator effective August 23rd, 2022. An ISO move.
Second.
Motion by Johnson, second by Stunich. Any discussion? Chairman Johnson.
This was the MOA we asked staff to negotiate at a prior meeting, and this is just the end result of it.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign that motion carries. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. Next up is to approve the promotion of Taylor Lockhorst to Street Maintenance One. And the motion is to approve the promotion of Taylor Lockhorst to Street Maintenance One position effective October 3rd, 2022, and that he be placed on step one of the Street Maintenance One wage grid and further to direct staff to begin the hiring process to backfill the park maintenance position. An ISO move.
Second.
Motion by Johnson, second by Stingline. Any discussion? Chairman Johnson.
Taylor worked in the Parks Department. He applied for the street job. We're moving him over there. Now we have an opening in the Parks Department we need to fill.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. Next up is authorize the sale of a retired police squad, and the motion is to authorize the sale of retired police squad number 498 utilizing Central Minnesota Dealer Auction. An ISO move.
Second.
Motion by Johnson, second by Stunich. Any discussion? Chairman Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a 2014 Chevrolet Impala, so this is back when we were purchasing all of our automobiles. It is being replaced by a leased vehicle, but the reason we're going with Central Minnesota Dealer Auction is because it's not a leased vehicle. It was purchased.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign that motion carries. Thank you. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. Next up is the ratification of hiring of a police officer, and the motion is to ratify the hiring of police officer Nicholas Karsnia starting at LELS step one rate of $29.79 an hour with an effective date of August 22nd, 2022, and authorize the hiring of one CSO. An ISO move.
Second.
Motion by Johnson, second by Stingline. Chairman Johnson.
Yeah, this is just ratifying a job offer that was extended by the Civil Service Commission when they still existed. And if you haven't caught the article yet, the Dispatch had a great write-up on Nick, and it's pretty cool to see a local kid get a job at his local police department to help his community. So, good on Nick, and thanks for everybody involved.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Seeing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign that motion carries. Please proceed.
All right, consider approval of classification and compensation study, RFP, and the motion is to approve the classification and compensation study request for proposals as presented. An ISO move.
Second.
Thank you. Second, motion by Johnson, second by Stunich. Chairman Johnson.
This is the wage study that we've been talking about doing for years that we're trying to do once every five years. We want to do it next year, so this, we're going out for RFPs with this.
This should be great. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
All right, next up, Mr. President, is the discussion of the 2023 audit fees. And the motion out of committee, I didn't write it down, is something along the lines of to direct staff to notify Clifton Larson that we're going to continue to use them for our 2022 audit and to put into the budget $54,821 for audit fees. An ISO move.
Second.
Motion by Johnson, second by Stingline. Chairman Johnson.
There was a question from staff on which direction to go with this and if we should go out for an RFP because we haven't since 2015, or if we should continue using CLA. We had some discussion at committee, and we decided that staff is happy with CLA. They'll probably be the favorite in the end. They were in 2015 despite not being the cheapest bid, but they're just the most familiar, they're the most convenient, being that they do BPU, they do HRA, and they're a local Baxter Audit Firm as opposed to Audit Far Yo'or, Minneapolis.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. President. Next up is authorization to apply to LM CIT loan program for extraordinary expense. And the motion is to authorize, whoop, that's not the motion at all. The motion is to apply or tell the LM CIT that we want to apply for the maximum possible loan for an extraordinary expense. An ISO move.
Second.
Motion by Johnson, second by Stunich. Chairman Johnson.
Yeah, the Finance Director informed us in committee, Mr. President, that we, the lawsuit probably does qualify as an expense, and we can probably borrow up to $250,000. And if we pay it back in less than a year, it's zero percent, and then it's pretty low interest, three percent after that. So it's, it'll give us some flexibility, so we think it's a good idea to apply for this loan.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. Next up is a resolution declaring our intent to reimburse certain expenditures from bonds. And the motion is to adopt a resolution declaring the official intent to reimburse certain original expenditures from the proceeds of tax-exempt bonds and establishing compliance with reimbursement bond regulations under the Internal Revenue Code. An ISO move.
Second.
By Johnson, second by Stingline. Chairman Johnson.
Mr. President, this resolution is just a technicality step if we were to, in the future, decide that we want to take out debt and reimburse ourselves for any unfair labor practices we may have committed recently. We're not intending to take out debt, but it does give us a few years to look back that we could take out debt if something comes up in the future. So we're adopting this resolution tonight.
Thank you. Any additional discussion? Seeing none. Administrator Bergman, please call the roll.
Stunich.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Beazer.
Yes.
Stingline.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
O'Day.
Yes.
And Bevins.
Yes, that resolution is adopted. Please proceed.
All right, thank you, Mr. President. Our final item is one I'm abstaining from because it's a relative of mine is involved, and it's all that Tiffany, you do it.
So the motion coming out of committee is to adopt the resolution approving the termination of an assessment agreement between the Housing and Redevelopment Authority in and for the City of Brainerd and for the City of Brainerd, Minnesota, Nelson Keepers LLP.
A motion by Stingline. Is there a second? Second by Stunich. Any discussion? Tiffany Stingline.
Okay, so the property, the SEH Building, has sold. The new owners would like to pay this off ahead of schedule and just go back to regular assessment levels, the value. So, they want to pay us. I think that's great.
Excellent. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Administrator Bergman, please call the roll.
Stunich.
Yes.
Johnson.
Obscene.
Beazer.
Yes.
Stingline.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
O'Day.
Yes.
And Bevins.
Yes, that resolution is adopted. Chairman Johnson.
End of report.
Thank you very much. Next up is 6B, Safety and Public Works Committee Chairman, Michael O'Day.
Thank you, Mr. President. Safety and Public Works had just five items tonight. First of which was a street event closure application for the Fire Department Open House. This will be on October 13th from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. with a small area of closure on East River Road next to the fire station. Same event they've had many times in the past, and it's always been great. Motion coming out of committee is to approve the attached application under the condition that the applicant request traffic control for the street closure one week prior to the event, and I so move.
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. Second item was the application for a street closure for St. Francis School Marathon. This is an event on October 19th, 19th, from 8:30 a.m. to about 12:30 p.m. About 175 students from St. Francis School running from Juniper Street, North 9th Street, North 10th Street, and Kingwood Street. Motion coming out of committee was to approve the attached application under the condition the applicant notify the adjacent residences and businesses of the event. Signs are removed after the event conclusion, and an insurance certificate is submitted to the city per the permit requirements before the event, and I so move.
Second, Erickson.
Motion by O'Day, second by Erickson. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. Approval, the next item on the agenda was a temporary construction easement for the historic Water Tower project. We've come to an agreement with Brennan Person, Brad Person, has decided not to charge anything to the city, open up a construction easement so we can have High Tech bring their equipment in, in the bigger part of their parking lot over there, and allow for access into the tower at limited amounts of time during the day. He's elected to do this at no charge to the city, and just requests that the Water Tower Committee recognize his approval as a donation.
Excellent.
Recommendation out of the committee was to approve the attached easement as presented. I so move.
I second.
Motion by O'Day, second by Beazer. Any additional discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. Fourth item on the agenda was approval of electrical and mechanical at the Streets and Parks Department, the Parks addition to the Streets and Parks Building. This was something that was essentially missed in our original bidding process, it seems. The contracts are a little bit confusing at this point, but what it comes down to is we have an amount of electrical work that Holden Electrical has already essentially started, from what we understand. They're bidding at $31,410, and we also have some plumbing work from Pike Plumbing and Heating for $37,100. This project was originally budgeted at $468,109. After we did receive previous bids, we thought we were done at about $504,000. Now with these additional costs, we're at $586,263. We're assured that this isn't going to affect our budget going into next year with any penalties that we're going to pay. We do have the money to pay for it, but another learning experience for the city and staff. So, motion coming out of committee so that we can have a functional addition to the Streets and Parks Building was to approve the quotes from Pike Plumbing and Heating and Holden Electric for the additional mechanical and electrical work at the Brainerd Streets and Parks Building addition for a total project cost of $586,263. I so move.
Motion by O'Day, second by Erickson. Any discussion? Chairman Johnson.
Mr. President, I just want to make sure I'm hearing this right. Did the City of Brainerd spend $468,000 building a building in the year 2022 of our Lord and didn't put in any electricity or plumbing? Is that what I'm hearing?
Chairman O'Day.
I think what I can help you with is that the design work was bid. The actual work for the electrical and the plumbing was not included in that bid. Now, it seems to me like Holden Electric has already actually purchased a lot of the equipment, the big heaters that are going in there, and it was just never properly followed through. And we had some transition through the summer and the late months of spring, so it was just something that got missed, and it's just being brought to council this week.
Chairman Johnson.
I think that's a yes. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right. Administrator Bergman believes she can maybe help answer your question.
The recommendation that came from Woodseth when the bids, when the estimates were done, was that the city could save some money if they bid the electrical and the mechanical separately. So when Woodseth did bid it, they bid it without the electrical and mechanical, and then, as Chairman O'Day mentioned, in the transition, those were not bid by the city. And so Jesse has been working on that for the past couple of weeks to get the electrical and the mechanical bids done.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Any further discussion?
Nope.
Okay. We have a motion, yep?
Snarky remarks.
Oh, snarky.
Just snarky remarks.
Okay, none needed. No more needed. I think we get it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. Final item was code enforcement direction, and there was just two properties on this for this month. 9206 North Town Street, which was an unlicensed vehicle. They've received multiple citations and warning letters. This is, motion coming out of committee for this one is going to be issuing a 10-day order to correct letter for the vehicle and begin working with the city attorney for abatement. Second was 15284 Beaver Dam Road. This is something that's been going on pretty much all year. Multiple, multiple letters and warnings have been sent, $600 in open citations. This is an unlicensed rental that is apparently just renting and not responding to the city. So the other recommendation for this one was to issue a 10-day order to correct letter and begin working with the city attorney for legal action. And so for those, both those recommendations coming out of committee, the motion is to approve those recommendations going forward, and I so move.
Motion by O'Day. Is there a second?
I second.
Second by Beazer. Any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Chairman O'Day.
End of report.
Thank you very much. Next up is item seven. It's unfinished business. 7A is a first reading of proposed ordinance 1536 amending chapters one and two of the Brainerd City Charter. Administrator Bergman, can you care to add anything to what's in our packet?
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, on June 20th, the City Council, at the June 20th City Council meeting, the council held the final reading of ordinance 1532. That was the ordinance that lumped a number of different changes to the charter, that in order for a charter to be amended, an ordinance must have a unanimous vote. That vote did fail on a 4-3 vote. The discussion at the council was that there were too many changes in one charter or in one ordinance for several items within the charter. That was then sent back to the Charter Commission. The Charter Commission discussed the ordinance at their July meeting and recommended that the council consider this in three separate ordinances. This is one of three you will be hearing tonight. Ordinance 1536 amends two sections of the charter. Chapter one, section two, removing the written description of the wards and replacing it with the city shall be divided into four wards in accordance with state law. And chapter two, the second amendment would be chapter two, section 14, by changing the elections of president and vice president to the first meeting in January as opposed to the first meeting of the city council after the regular city election. Since the council members do not take their oath until the first meeting in January, it would be difficult to elect a president and vice president. Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Any questions of the city administrator on what we're voting on? Seeing none, we're looking for a motion to conduct the first reading of proposed ordinance 1536, an ordinance amending chapter one, section two, and chapter two, section 14 of the Brainerd City Charter.
So move, Erickson.
Motion by Erickson, second by O'Day. Any discussion? Any discussion? It's a reminder to dispense with this actual reading, the ordinance, it must be unanimous. Hearing no further discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That motion carries and passes unanimously. We will move on to item 7B, first reading of proposed ordinance 1537, amending chapter three of the Brainerd City Charter. And this one, Finance Director Hillman will give us the highlights.
Thank you, Council President. Staff reviewed chapter three and the information about the Permanent Improvement Fund. Staff felt it needed to be updated as it made reference to sections that were no longer applicable, and the rest of the information in the Permanent Improvement Fund was about issuing certificates in debt, which we do under state statute, and then we have debt service funds that we account for it. The funds levied for the Permanent Improvement Fund are transferred into the Construction Fund, 401, and are used to maintain the street and alleys. And so the proposed ordinance 1537 is modified so that the section states that the permanent improvement levy can be used for streets and that nine percent of the, that the levy should not exceed nine percent of the previous year's tax levy to be used specifically for streets.
Any questions of Finance Director Hillman as to what we're voting on? Hearing none. Seeing none, we're looking for a motion to conduct the first reading of proposed ordinance 1537, an ordinance amending chapter three of the Brainerd City Charter. Any motions to?
Move to approve, Erickson.
Move to approve, Erickson. Is there a second?
Johnson. Seconds.
Thank you, Chairman Johnson. We have a motion. We have a delayed second. Any discussion?
I have a quick question.
Yes, Chairman O'Day.
This nine percent, about not to exceed, is this something that's going to come up in budget discussion on whether we are at zero or nine each time we go through the budget? We're able to change that?
Mm-hmm. This year, we kept it at, the preliminary levy had it at six percent, which was equivalent to, before it said we could levy up to four mils or three mils. I can't remember which. Anyway, we compared, when we did the budget meeting, we compared if we were at six percent or seven percent of the previous year's levy, and it was a recommendation to keep it at six percent.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That motion passes unanimously. We will move on to item 7C, which is the first reading of proposed ordinance 1538, amending chapter five of the Brainerd City Charter. Finance Director Hillman, what do you have for us on this?
So the former city engineer, Paul Sandy, reviewed the Streets chapter, that was chapter five, and recommended eliminating the majority of the chapter as it was covered in state statute. However, staff felt the language needed to be, needed to be in the charter to allow the council to defer payments of certain assessments, and that was previously included in the Streets chapter. Staff also felt that it would be better if it was in chapter two, under the officers and elections. So therefore, the proposed ordinance 1538 eliminates the Streets chapter in its entirety and adds a paragraph in chapter two stating, "The city council may at its discretion defer payment of certain special assessments for street improvements as defined in chapter 429 of the Minnesota statute where financial hardship exists." And the council shall, by ordinance or resolution, define the circumstances where such deferment may be made.
Thank you. Any questions of Finance Director Hillman regarding this ordinance? Any questions? Hearing none. We're looking for a motion to conduct the first reading of proposed ordinance number 1538, an ordinance amending chapters two and three of the Brainerd City Charter, and a reminder that to dispense with the actual reading of the ordinance, the vote must be unanimous.
So moved.
So moved by Stingline, second by Stunich.
On top of it, Kevin.
We got it, man. Leave it to personal and finance.
You guys don't get out much, do you? All right. We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion on the motion? Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That motion passes unanimously. We will move on now to, boom, item D, call for applicants. Mr. Mayor.
Yes, 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 yes. The City of Brainerd is looking for people to step up and fulfill seats on various commissions and boards. The applications are available at ci.braner.mn.us/boards, and we have the following seats available. Cable TV Advisory Committee.
Potentially.
No longer existing, but two terms expiring in 2022, one term expiring in 2024.
So get on now and get your tower award.
Sounds like it. Sounds like a good way to do it. The Charter Commission, one term expiring 2022, one term expiring 2025. Rental Dwelling License Board of Appeals, two terms expiring 2022. We also have one seat on the EDA expiring 2022 and one seat on the EDA expiring 2026.
That's it?
That's it.
No comments?
No, not at this point.
Don't give them that opportunity.
Moving, we're moving.
All right. And as council president, I have listed three openings. The Airport Commission, one term to expire 2024, for which I nominate Mr. Kevin Yeager, and he promises to look carefully at the number of commissions he's on and, and.
All of them.
Right.
But is he looking for the opening?
He has great qualifications, and he is a pilot. Planning Commission, one term to expire 2023, was filled last, last meeting. And Water Tower Fundraising Committee, one position left, and I recommend Mr. Paul Sandy. So we're looking for a motion to accept my two recommendations.
I'd move to accept those two recommendations.
Motion by Johnson, second by Stingline. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Item eight is new business. Item 8A is a call for a public hearing for the removal of a library board member. And this is, can you roll it up and see who's, Administrator Bergman, you have the, who nominates this?
So I can, I can take this, Mr. President, if you would like.
You know what? Before you do, this is not my underst, can I, this is not my understanding of how this should work, because it seems like we are, yeah, taking somebody out. It's my, yeah, it's my understanding that whoever appointed this person at the request of the chairman of the committee, unless it is the chairman, can, can move, can recommend to replace this. I just, I'm just going to mention I don't like this public hearing because it looks, doesn't look good for our volunteers, even if they don't ever show up. So it's your call.
I am, I am happy to give you some background if you would like.
Sure.
So the library board is actually requesting that the city council remove Mr. Loyal Hyatt from the library board for non-attendance. They have attempted to contact him several times since August of 2021, and leaving the library short, one member has concerned them as far as getting a quorum in order to conduct business. Per our charter, every person appointed to any office by the city council or mayor may be removed from such office by a vote of two-thirds of all council members authorized to be elected. But any officer appointed by the mayor shall not be removed except for cause, nor unless first furnished with a copy of the charges, nor until such person shall have a reasonable opportunity to be heard in person or by council in his or her defense. According to our charter, the council shall fix the time and place for the hearing of such officer, of which not less than 10 days' notice shall be given to such officer, and shall have the power to compel the attendance of witnesses and the production of papers and to hear and determine the case. And if such officer shall refuse or neglect to appear, the council may declare such office vacant. According to our charter, in order to remove a member, this is the process, and the library board has requested that the city council consider this. Attached to the packet is a letter from Susan Hardy, who is the board president of the Brainerd Library Board.
Thank you. I guess that's the way it is. Any questions of the administrator?
And the city attorney is here as well, if you have any questions about the language in the charter in order to remove a member appointed by the mayor.
Thank you. Any questions of the administrator? Any questions of the administrator or the attorney? Hearing none. We're looking for a motion to set a public hearing for September 19th, 2022, at 7:30 PM, at the request of the library board chair to remove a member.
So move, Erickson.
Erickson, second by Stunick. Any questions on the motion? Comments, concerns? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Uh, Eight B is considering a resolution dissolving the Cable TV Advisory Committee. I told you, get your application in.
Oh.
All right, Sean Strong, anything you wish to add to what's in our packet?
Uh, nothing to add.
Nothing to add? Any questions of Sean?
Did any applications come in?
In the last minute, I had.
Nope.
Okay. We have to then hold a public hearing to get rid of them.
Who, the mayor or the?
I don't know, Charlie.
Yeah, how do you get rid of the mayor? Is that what you're saying, Kevin? Let's not even talk that way. All right. We're looking for a motion to adopt the resolution acknowledging and applauding the accomplishments of the Cable TV Advisory Committee and dissolving the committee until a time at which the city council deems it necessary to reestablish.
So moved, Stingline.
Motion by Stingline?
Second.
Second by, was it O'Day? Any discussion? I'm going to miss this committee, uh, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, I just have a couple of quick questions about the timeframe, because this is tied up with our contracts that we have, correct?
No longer. It was removed from the renewal a couple of years ago.
Okay. So there isn't a timeframe for them? Okay. That was my main, my main concern with it, because I know that having sat through that process, that we had timeframes attached to them. And we were not very good at following those timeframes, so.
Or others.
Yeah. I'm going to miss this committee. I was bringing a tear to my eye. All right. Hearing no more discussion, Administrator Bergman, please call the roll.
Stunick.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yep.
Beazer.
Yes.
Stingline?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
O'Day?
Yes.
And Bevins.
Yes, that resolution is adopted. We're going to move on now to Eight C, new business, consider conditional use permit for the world's largest ice vending machine at 1202 South Sixth Street. And this will be James Krambeck.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, so Todd Sutton has submitted an application for a conditional use permit to operate an ice and water vending machine at 1202 South Sixth Street, uh, which is under the required 1,000 square feet for commercial buildings in the city of Brainerd. Uh, the building is approximately 200 square feet, and because of this, a CUP is needed. Uh, Mr. Sutton has proposed to demo the building that was formerly Bobby's Kitchen, um, to operate the ice and water vending machine at that site. Uh, Planning Commission considered this P, uh, CUP request. Uh, discussion occurred, uh, whether this building meets the definition of commercial retail establishments, um, and if this building, um, is an accessory use or a primary use. Uh, so Planning Commission ultimately considered that it did and, and recommended at a four-to-one vote to approve the conditional use permit, uh, with the conditions that the applicant submit to staff a lighting plan, 27K, 2,700K lighting color or warmer, um, and fencing slash screening plans that meet the current residential standards. And I can certainly answer any questions. The applicant is also here.
Thank you, uh, Community Development Director Krambeck. Any questions of our Community Development Director? Questions? Hearing none. Then we're looking for a motion to approve the conditional use permit for the operation of the ice and water vending machine at 1202 South Sixth Street with the conditions that the applicant submit to staff the lighting, uh, 2,700K lighting color or warmer and fencing screening plans that meet the current residential standards. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Stingline?
Second.
Second by Beazer?
Yes.
Any discussion on the motion?
One quick question.
Yeah, Chairman O'Day?
Is this seasonal or is this, uh, is this just during the summer months, I guess?
Cost of goods goes way down in the winter.
What's that? Oh, I thought it'd be...
On the ice, not the water.
Warm water. Now, I don't know if people are going to shower there or not.
Yeah.
Good.
Mr. Krambeck? We have a question. Is the facility going to be open toward, uh?
Yes, I believe the applicant did state that it would be year-round. It would essentially, um, have heating elements into it to, you know, obviously your pipes don't freeze up. Um, so that was the last conversation that I did have with the applicant.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, anything else? Any other questions? Any other questions? Hearing none. We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Next up is Item Eight, new business D, consider a conditional use permit for residential recovery facility at 2501 Greenwood Street. Uh, Mr. Krambeck?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, so Sam Anderson has submitted a request on behalf of Central Minnesota Dalton Teen Challenge for a conditional use permit to operate a residential addiction and recoveries facility, uh, with outpatient services at 2501 Greenwood Street. Uh, the current owner of this property is Evangelical Lutheran Good Samaritan. Um, Mr. Anderson does have an agreement to purchase property if the CUP is approved. Uh, the applicant proposes to purchase three former memory care units of the Woodland Good Samaritan Organization. Uh, the buildings currently have 16 bedrooms each with small common spaces in the middle. Uh, two of the buildings, uh, they are proposing to use for residential recovery services, providing a total of 32 bedrooms, uh, with 64 spaces if two occupants were placed in each room. Uh, residential uses in the PSP district require a conditional use permit. Uh, the Planning Commission voted unanimously to recommend approval of the CUP request with the condition that any future development of parking lots conform to the residential lighting and screening standards. Um, so they would have to conform to residential standards rather, rather than PSP standards. Um, with that, I can certainly answer any questions council has. The applicant is also here.
Thank you. Any questions of Mr. Krambeck? Any questions? Uh, Mr. Chairman O'Day?
How many residents will be able to stay at these facilities? There's, there's two facilities, correct?
Yeah, so there's, there's three buildings. The applicant is proposing essentially two buildings for the residential recovery facilities. Um, they did state that essentially if there was, uh, double occupancy in each room, that there could be 64 residents essentially at these two buildings.
64, wow.
Thank you.
Keep, yeah, just as a comment, I think we've seen different, um, we've seen different organizations that are coming through here and trying to help people. None better than Minnesota Dalton Teen Challenge. You guys are not an experiment. You guys have been, you guys have proven what, what it is to be a great organization when it comes to this kind of stuff. I like this idea for multiple reasons. It's close to the other facilities that you guys have in town. It's just a walk through the woods, the way I see it. It allows you guys to, to kind of keep everything together. Um, and I think you would, you would see more pushback from people throughout the community if, if you were to do this in single-family homes, where this is a, a perfect area to walk into, like you said, support 64 residents at the same time. So I think this is a fantastic idea. I will support.
Yeah, Chairman Johnson?
Mr. President, I have one question, maybe it's, I don't know, not the right time to ask it, but it seems like we're getting more and more old people in the world. Well, sorry, sorry to the old people in the world. But why is, why is Good Sam shutting down some of their memory care units when that seems to be like a commercially viable business model and much needed? Do you know why they're shutting down and selling it off?
Yeah, from what I heard, it was essentially staffing issues, um, that they could no longer offer those services to those three buildings.
Okay, thank you.
Heard that before. Any further discussion or questions on the motion? Hearing none. We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Next up is Item Nine, public forum. This is a time allocated for citizens to bring matters not on the agenda to the attention of the council. We usually ask that you keep it in, for two to three minutes. Since everybody has vacated, the audience...
That's because Gabe called them all old.
Mr. Strong, I see nobody online. They all left. We will open the public forum at 8:08 and close it at 8:09 and move on to staff reports. Let's start over on this side with our, nothing to add, correct? All right. Fire chief, anything to add? Mr. Attorney?
Nothing here, thank you.
Community Development Director Krambeck?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. One thing here, just wanted to let city council know that Planning Commission will be holding a two-hour workshop from seven to nine tomorrow night at the Fire Department Training Hall. Uh, so there will be three items for discussion. We're essentially going to go for two hours and cover as many as we can. Um, the first item discussion will be potential code language related to the six-month moratorium. Uh, again, that moratorium is put in place to review issues in Brainerd regarding the conversion of dwellings to green space or surface parking. Um, the second issue that, uh, we're going to be looking at is lighting, uh, specifically discussion about color temperature, potentially adding that to the language in the code. Um, and then the third part, uh, this part was, um, outlined to, to work on after the, um, zoning code adoption, uh, but looking, uh, more directly at the manufactured housing district. Um, so with that, uh, that's everything that's going to be potentially covered at the workshop tomorrow night.
Thank you. Jesse Dean, City Engineer, Public Works Director, anything to add?
Thank you. Uh, just something really quick, uh, just a quick reminder that MNDOT does have their virtual open house for the Highway 210, uh, Washington Reconstruction Project. Uh, that open house is going to be available until the 12th, so about one more week, uh, that, that'll be available to put input. And we really want people to get on there and, uh, provide their comments and their input on that project, uh, as that continues to, uh, evolve and scope. So, that was my only piece.
Thank you. Finance Director Hillman?
Just can, uh, we're continuing to work on the budget and levy, so if you have any thoughts or questions from the workshop, please let us know. Um, I appreciate any, um, thought input from the council, so thank you.
Thank you. Sean Strong, GIS?
Nothing to add.
All right. Police chief?
Nothing, Mr. President.
All right, and we'll, uh, and, and nobody's online, right, Sean?
Correct.
And Administrator Bergman?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. I have a couple of things to add in addition to my written report. Um, I did get an update on Friday from Bladech. Uh, as of September 2nd, uh, Bladech has received 23 applications for the Main Street, uh, deed Main Street revitalization program, uh, for a total of 1.559 million dollars. That was as of last Friday. I have not gotten a written update or an emailed update, but as I understand, they had an additional 20 applications over the weekend, which brings them up to 43 applications. The EDA Subcommittee will be meeting on the 15th to review those and go to the, uh, full EDA Board in, in October, I think it's October 6th. Um, one other thing that I'd like to share, and in fact, I may ask Chief Bestel, uh, to give a little additional information. We had a two-and-a-half hour meeting last week with the League of Minnesota Cities Insurance Trust and a group called Benchmarking. They are doing a pilot program on workers' compensation claims, uh, for police departments, and they've seen a huge increase. And one of the reasons that they specifically selected Brainerd was because Brainerd is one of the best performers in the state of Minnesota with the fewest amount of worker comp insurance claims. Um, they talked a lot about what, asked a lot of questions about what we were doing and how we were doing things right, uh, to, to reduce our claims. And they compared us to other communities our size, you know, not just metro. This was statewide. So, Chris and Mike, um, Bestel, John Davis and I sat in on that. And I don't know if you have anything else to add, chief, but I just thought, I mean, it was a big pat on the back to the police department and what they do and how they operate. And they really wanted to hear more from the chief and the deputy chief about what they are doing so that they can help share that with other communities. Chief?
Probably activated to go to the city's...
Yeah, I, I think that, that was a great couple of hours that we spent with them. One of the things that we really, we focused on was morale and appreciation and recognition of our employees, uh, great training that we have, hiring, uh, good candidates, supporting them, and having good policy in place to make sure we're doing what we need to do. So I think you kind of take all that together and working as one team and looking out for each other. And I, I think their biggest thing was training. Well, you know, when we train, we trained, um, you know, whether it be a post-mandated training or real-life scenario, we talked a lot about mental health and de-escalation and all those buzzwords in our, in our industry right now, but we do a really good job in that to hold our, you know, our, our employees accountable. Um, so I think that was kind of the, kind of the take-home for me was, was really focusing on that.
Thank you. Anything else?
No, thank you, and thanks, police department.
Thanks to the police department. Mayor Bino?
Out of order. Out of order, for sure. Uh, so first of all, I want to thank, uh, all of our area kids and, uh, teachers and staff, and welcome them back to school today. I don't know how many of you in here were on social media, but that's all the buzz. All the kids with the photos of where they're going and all the brand-new shirts and whatnot. Just want to thank, uh, everyone involved with that. I know that's a big day for a lot of families, especially our youngest, uh, citizens that are just starting their journey. My son, today, four years old, started his preschool journey at St. Francis, because it's right down the road, got to walk him to school, got to walk him back home from school, very exciting stuff. So he was very excited. Lots of families, want to thank all of them and, and, uh, thank all of our young parents as well for bringing their students in and out of the school safely. Uh, two things, we've got the Highway 210, Washington Street, uh, project that's happening. Uh, I don't know if any of you were able to, uh, catch the dispatch or any of the news about, uh, the reaction from some of our citizens to some of the plans that are being put into place. And, uh, I think this is a very important part of the process. We, as a city, have seen some of these things. We've went over some of these things. Not all of us agree with some of these things, but now is the time for the citizens to speak up and for them to get an opportunity to say what they're looking for. And I think here at City Hall, it's really important that we make sure that people are aware that, uh, we are listening and we are willing to, to hear what, uh, the citizens think is best and what the businesses think is best. And we can't get everything that everybody wants, because we can't be everything for everyone. However, we should be looking to have this, uh, road be the best version that we can create, and I think that, uh, is really important. So, uh, pipe down over there. Lastly, coming up yet this month, September 24th, ladies and gentlemen, it is the Second Annual Brainerd Paul Bunyan Flapjack Festival. I don't know if you got to partake last year, but there are pancakes to be eaten. There are pancakes to be flipped and caught and raced with down the street.
Until Kelly shows up.
And you're choked on. Mike O'Day was an amazing contestant in the pancake eating contest last year, probably the driest pancakes you've ever seen in your life. Picked up the maple syrup and poured it into his mouth like a champion. He did win. However...
I did not.
Oh, yeah, that's right, you did not. You were, you were beat by a 12-year-old, even after all that. I forgot about this. To that 12-year-old, congratulations and welcome back to school. Uh, but I just, I just want to say this. I want to say thank you to, uh, the American Legion, who will be helping us out in making our pancakes this year. Uh, I want to say thank you to the Mills Automotive Group, because they will be letting us use their parking lot again. And I wanted to thank, uh, the Brainerd Water Tower Committee for putting this on with the Brainerd J.C.s. So it should be a really good event, uh, from 11 to 2 on September 24th, which is a Saturday. We tried doing it on a Sunday last year. People don't like coming out on Sundays, we found out. So we're doing it on a Saturday. You're all going to be excited, it's going to be a lot of fun. And I just want to say thank you to Brad Pearson, you heard that earlier tonight, uh, for the donation of allowing us to, uh, use his parking lot during the construction. But don't forget, Flapjack Festival, September 24th, and I expect there to be two teams of council members in the relay race. of council members in the relay race. So I'm just, I'm demanding that as the mayor. End of report.
SPW versus P&amp;L.
That's what I want to see.
Excellent idea. All right, council committee reports, let's start in the middle, Chairman Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. President. One item, Eric Sharpton, here regrets not being here tonight, but he, uh, is out of town, he, he and his wife had planned to get married in Ireland in April of 2020. Some things happened, they were not able to, but they're finally getting that trip to Ireland out of the way this week, so they're good, good for Eric and Tarna.
Well, they waited two years to get married?
No, they got married that fall, but they're still going to Ireland.
Chairman O'Day?
I have nothing to add tonight. You guys have talked enough.
Nothing to add tonight.
All right, Mr. Beazer?
Nothing to add, thank you.
Tiffany Stingline?
Nothing from me.
And nothing to add, I won't add anything. Item 13 is an adjournment to closed session pursuant to Minnesota Statute 13D.03 to discuss labor negotiation strategy. Before I ask for a motion to move into closed session, we will be, when we come out of closed session, we will be adjourning this meeting to employee appreciation event September 14th at Lum Park. So we're looking for a motion to adjourn to the labor negotiation strategy.
So moved Erickson.
Second.
Motion by Erickson, second by Stingline, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed same sign? Let's move on.